I have not received any information from the public regarding our proposed budget. Or is there anyone in the audience here to talk about our proposed budget?
On down to five point one.
Would you meet?
That's all.
I thought you had a lot of business to attend to before you, I would be on the agenda. You are, man, you're.
You never know who's gonna show up.
Right, okay. Well, I'm Rhonda Holden. I work with Kidder Test Valley Healthcare and I also work with Medic One and Hospital District Two for their strategic planning initiatives. And one of the most important things to us right now that we have on the agenda is passing the CMS levy. And so that's why I'm here tonight is to ask you guys to vote yes for EMS. And also just answer any questions that you may have about medical services that we provide. I know they sent the PowerPoint, which I don't have to go through slide by slide. I can just kind of chat with you since you've probably already looked at this in advance. I think the really important things to know is that we serve all of Upper Kidder Test County. And we are the only licensed advanced life support ambulance in upper county. So we do have a few BLS services. Fire District Seven has basic life support. But if you need the advanced care, if you need to manage your airway, if you need IVs, if you need a lot of medications or CPRs in progress, you need the advanced life support. And Medic One is the only one that provides that. So it's really important. We cover, like I said, the entire Upper Kidder Test County. We do have mutual aid agreements with all the fire districts. So that if we have ambulances out on a call, you may first have a fire district respond. They can help you, they can assist you, they could provide CPR to you until the ALS crew arrives. And then you would be turned over to their care. And if you're transported, it would be transported by Medic One. Which a lot of people don't know. And if you've ever had to call 911, you get kind of confused when you have, first of all, volunteers responding. And then you may have a BLS crew from the fire department respond and then you're gonna have advanced life support. So there, there's a real team of people. And we need that. We work really well together. But if you think about sometimes where our patients may be at, they may be in the upstairs. And we have to literally load that patient on a gurney and carry them safely downstairs and out the door and into a waiting ambulance. So we need all those people there and we work very well together. You probably saw in the presentation that our revenue, a lot of it comes from patient transports. That's about 55%. The other comes from the levy. I got that backwards. It's 45 and 55 from patient transports and then from the levy. So without the levy, we wouldn't be able to provide the services in the community. And the reason for that is we can only bill a patient or an insurance company if we actually transport you. So all the times that we come out to your home to take care of you, everything that we provide is free unless you're transported. And also if you're transported, we are only reimbursed mileage for one way to the hospital. It's a, you know, when you're in the rig is when we can put the mileage in. But we're still obviously paying for that staff time whenever they're transporting you or transporting on the way back. And with the changes that we've seen in healthcare with COVID, we used to pretty much refer everything down to KDH or Yakama. But more and more and more, we're having to transport patients to the west side. And, you know, getting an ambulance crew in and out of a hospital in the Seattle area is crazy, you know? And we have through COVID, taken patients into Idaho, we've taken them up to Bellingham, a lot on the west side. So we'll have a crew out for five plus hours. The cost of the ambulance is another huge expense for us. We typically run an ambulance until it has about 150,000 miles on it. And at that point, we need to, it starts breaking down. We have to order an ambulance at least like a year and a half in advance, a year and a half to two years out to get it. And it's costing us around $350,000 just for the ambulance itself. So that has greatly gone up in cost. Then we have to outfit it with our crew. We do try to station our ambulances. You've probably seen at it Station 73, just right off of I-90. We keep one of our Medic One rigs and crew there just to help with the I-90 corridor here. The other is at Station 99 in Clealum. And then if we're really busy, have a busy weekend, or it's a busy ski weekend, we will staff a third crew up at Snoqualmie Pass, just in anticipation of wrecks. So I know that we're on the back of the ballot. It's a big ballot. So turn it over and vote for us first before you get worn out from going through all the judges. If you have any particular questions of me, I'm happy to answer. One might be, why do we have two hospital districts? And you may or may not know that in 1906, we did have a hospital in Hospital District Two built up on our family medicine Clealum property. It was built by the miners because they were pretty much under the care of the Northwest Improvement for the mining company. And they felt like they weren't being fairly treated. They were being released to work too early. So they collected funds to build their own hospital. And they built it out of wood. The first year it burnt. And so they built it back out of brick. And it was an operational hospital until 1972. At that time, we still used their x-ray and their lab. And then finally, it was torn down. And we still have that property all around where Station 99 is and the family medicine Clealum. So that is why we do have two hospital districts and just run an ambulance service. Anything you would like to ask of me? No? Okay. Well, thank you so much for letting me be on your agenda. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. You're more than welcome to stay.
Back down to Ross.
Oh.
What we're gonna talk about.
We get that a lot.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to open our, open public meeting or the floor?
We didn't.
So just make sure of your minutes, because I know you opened your meeting. But so we turn our minutes to identify that you have the budget here.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That has to be separate.
Been a lot more questions for her, but I'm in chief. He's the assistant chief and he's firefighter. I get what she's saying.
No, I mean for the budget adoption.
Yeah.
Because you had to have a budget hearing.
Yep.
And yeah, has to be separate.
Multi hearing.
Okay. Well, moving on to five point two, super vendor reports, each are updated.
Yeah, some good news. We were able to hire a school council last week. Nice. This person was Thorpe's kind of runner-up. They would have hired her as well, but we had a bit more competition. So I'm very thankful that we have hired, I wrote down Sadie Klein is her name. She went by Sadie something else. When we interviewed her, she just got married. So Sadie will be joining us. Her husband is studying to be a history teacher down at Central. She graduated, graduated from Central, went to UPS, has been on the west side. So she's back over here on the east side. And I had a couple of other, other staff members help out interview. Patrick, Haley and Kyle were doing the virtual interview with her. And I didn't let things go, didn't let her leave the, the building until we had a, an agreement, so to speak. Because it's been very difficult trying to find a school counselor. My wife is part of the school statewide school counselor association. And I think there are about 15 to 20 counseling positions still open. So we were very fortunate to, to have Sadie. Is new to the counseling field, but has been working, like I said, for the last couple of years back in the Tacoma School District. And is very much excited to be back over on the east side of that one, so close to, close to Central. So great news. Nice. I was getting very, very worried about that. Came through. Ms. Anderson, as you know, has resigned. And I received an email from Ms. Burton who would like to do a voluntary transfer into Ms. Anderson's position. So I put the CBA language down below in that tiny font. So you basically see what our CBA says. So if we have an interested staff member who's qualified, you know, has positive evaluations and review, basically that they're given preference to outside candidates, which should make sense. So Ms. Burton will be our new four or five teacher. And with that leaves a couple of sections of middle school ELA open. So I've asked Mr. Ace Vegas to see if he would be interested and he's extremely interested. He's, has his bachelor's degree already, so we can get him emergency certified. But we'll also be working to get his, his teaching certificate in English and language. So this is exactly what he wants to do. So nice. That's a nice transition. We don't have to bring in somebody from the outside. And as you know, they, it's full time here anyways. It makes really good sense. And he's excited about the opportunity and as well as probably policy taught in that classroom. Then, you know, knock on wood, kind of fell into place. With the exception of our school nurse. So we're still looking for a part-time school nurse. I've reached out to the ESD and their nurse coordinator. She will at least get a start at the, at the beginning of the year, doing some of our mandatory staff trainings. But as I mentioned in my report, I'm working with an outside staffing companies. But signing the contracts with those companies is like, I'm signing your life away.
And what are the requirements for a school nurse?
Hello? Uh, no, no. I, I don't really know, quite, quite frankly. But I think the Mary, Mary Lou is the ESD representative is quite confident she can find somebody for us. Hopefully, we'll be a teacher. Might have to do, it'll be okay for all.
Yeah.
That is the end of my report.
All right. Moving on to five point three, so lookies and operations. Thank you. So ASB room, the shelves, I've been working on those. They're functionally complete. There's some trim I want to add to it, just more aesthetically pleasing. So it's not as industrial looking. But other than that, they're functional and they're up and good. Northfield irrigation systems repaired and it's watering the grass nicely. Elevator updates for that. We're gonna hold off for any other work on the elevator until the ADA grant comes out. So we can put in for that and see if that'll absorb some of the, the cost for that. Five-year sprinkler test was just conducted last week. And the sprinkler test, it was successful. There are no major repairs. Central fire or Central Washington Fire Protection is gonna order some additional sprinkler heads for us as well as a, an additional wrench for the larger sprinkler heads. And then as far as backflow tests, check valve one did fail on the backflow device. I'm not sure if it's dirty or if the valve itself needs to be replaced. I'm working with Johnson Controls to get that, that issue fixed. So and then they'll also, after they replace check valve one, they'll do another backflow test and then report to the compliance engine that the, the repair has been made. So we should be sitting good there with the new tractor. We've found a new tractor that we're looking at through Pappy Machinery. We have a state contract with John Deere, which would get us a 16 and a half percent discount on it as well as the trade-in value for our current tractor at $15,000, which drops the price significantly to about $45,000 from the price tag of $61,000. So that'll be helpful, be a more powerful tractor desk, except category one and will help significantly, especially during the winter months and any larger projects that we take on in the future. So we don't necessarily have to worry about overloading the tractor in that instance, which will help with maintenance and repairs. Gym padding, about 50% complete with the gym padding, the new gym padding that we have in the gym there. Just need to put up there, we are East End pads. The window perforated vinyl wraps, security wraps that you see outside the front. We're also putting that on the north side of the building. I've started that process today. I think, as I was saying earlier, I think I found the technique to, to get them on there so that they look good, they look nice. So that should go smoothly, hopefully. Let's see, I'm also working on putting in the remaining dead bolts for the classrooms. There are six that are remaining that need to be put on some classroom, classroom doors at the western. So I'll be working on that. Isolation valves, I know I've been talking about in, in the past, getting a plumber to put in some isolation valves. So I can do plumbing work or whatnot on the bathrooms, locker rooms. And however, when I was crawling under the school and then also in the basement area, I did find some shut-off valves for the water supply, which is nice. So I'll be working on mapping those out, find out which one shuts off water to what. And that'll help. So that'll save us a lot of money, a lot of time because we don't have to install it. So let's see, the endotoxin test report investigation, I believe I've found the source of the excessive endotoxin levels. Now, the initial tests were done by sweeping the tops of, you know, whiteboards. Anywhere where dust can collect that doesn't perhaps get regular cleaning that should. So, but in the counselor's room, there is a supply air system, but there's no return. However, in the specialist office right next to it, there's a return air system, but no supply. So the solution for that would be to put passive or bypass vent end that will allow supply and return in the counselor's office. Meaning fresh air comes in, bad air goes out. And then also in the specialist room installing a supply air system. So they will have fresh air also coming in and then they are tied into the HVAC system for having their return air leave. That's all I have for you.
Nice.
Yeah. I have to confirm that with Mr. Greg Weatherman, but I, I can see no other source. All right. There are no floor vents. There's no past history of leaks or anything like that. Any plumbing that's facilities right next to that room, they run underneath the school. Like I said, there are no floor vents allowed any of those endotoxins that have access. So I, I believe that it has something to do with the setup with the supply and the return. But I'll, I'll confirm that with Mr. Weatherman. Thanks. Good. Thank you, Jeff. All right, moving on. Sent agenda review.
Yeah?
Oh, board member reports. Five point four. Did anybody have any?
No. I want to make sure you.
I appreciate that. Okay, now going on. Set agenda.
Good question. It was just a fluke thing of me looking for it and asking questions. And I'm guessing the reason why we have Brian Jackson on there is because we have Sandy Can somewhere.
Yes.
Fabulous. And how long's that, but is it just a single sand can?
One can.
Has anybody looked into cheaper options?
We have not. We have a sandy can out there because kids would be, we don't want to come back in the building. So and for convenience, if we have it out in the bus garage, they have that, but.
It makes sense to have it. I just know Liberty's cheaper.
Liberty's cheap?
Liberty's cheaper. They're 95 bucks a month.
We're on it.
Thought it would be something where we could.
Absolutely. That was one of the first questions I answered. Why don't we have a court?
Right. I looked at it and I was like, I, I had to go back and look. I'm like, is this like a monthly thing? Was this graduation? Like, what is going on here? Nope. Okay.
We don't want to send the little ones back in the.
I don't blame you. Nope, that's a long ways.
How much did you say they were at Liberty?
I think they're 95 bucks a month.
Perfect.
I think that's what I heard checked for.
That's awesome.
Heard my head. Something like that.
I'm making motion to approve consent.
Okay.
Okay.
On forever?
On nine.
All right.
All right.
Okay. To financial updates and reports. One, that's for 2024, 25 Eastern School District Budget Presentation. Will you turn our regular meeting and open budget hearing? How do you reveal that? Separate, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So some schools will build a, will do a budget now and do the presentation and then close it and then open the regular meeting and then adopt the budget. So however you wanna, however you wanna do it is fine.
Okay. Well, then it's 7:50 now, so let's go with the, sorry. 17:50, but I don't know, time is off on this. So 6:50? Let's go ahead and.
It's 5:50.
Okay, I know where you went to school.
So let's go ahead and close the meeting. Now we don't want to graduate. And then we will move into our budget.
Nope.
Okay, ready?
Okay.
Okay, so this is a presentation on our 24, 25 school year budget. The first page here just talks about the different funds that are associated with school districts. The general fund, capital projects fund, debt service fund, ASP fund and transportation vehicle fund. And a description for each fund, if you want more information of what is allowable within each fund. We typically flow most all of our expenditures through the general fund. Here's a little summary of the general fund enrollment. We projected the enrollment for 24, 25 to be 82. Our 23, 24 average enrollment was 85.91. The reason we budget a little lower than current is because we want to make sure we drop kids, we aren't over budgeting. This was enrollment projections are based on district analysis grade wide. And I also worked with Aaron to project where we thought our kindergarten classes coming in that. Our enrollment or our revenues, our levy collections estimated at 25 cents per $1,000. We projected, or we got 3.7% for IPD, which is what a lot of people know as the pool up. And then we, for expenditures, we also put that 3.7 into our budget. But we also increased our salaries by the new bargaining amount of 6.3 plus the 3.7. We also anticipate the continuation of our preschool program. And we also put $500,000 in budget capacity, which allows us to receive new grants that we might not be anticipating for at this moment. This is just a summary of our budget over last year. So that first bull line, 24, 25 is over 23, 24. So you can just see where our revenues and expenditures may vary from last year's budget to this year's budget. And please stop me and ask questions if you see something that you'd like more information on. Go to the next page. This is our enrollment summary. So there's a five-year history to show where we've been in the past and where we're budgeting to be next year. And then here's a summary of our levy and where our collections are gonna be in year 24, 25 and 26. And then I graphed to show you, the purple bar is our capital levy, which has ended. And then the yellow bars are our EP and levy. This is the general fund summary. This is basically what you get in your monthly packet. It's very similar to our budget SaaS report. So it shows you our total revenues and total expenditures of our ending fund balance. The first column is our actual for 22, 23. And then the middle column is our budget from 23, 24. We don't have actual yet because we have our fiscal year end doesn't end till August 31st. And then what we're budgeting for in 24, 25. And everybody likes graphs better than numbers. So put a little graph in there to show you how it looks in a pie chart. And this is our budget by activity. So it's basically the same information, but breaking it down a little deeper. So taking a deeper dive. And, and we can see the numbers up at the side and the descriptions. So you can see what the budget for each one of those line items in. It follows the same format as far as actuals in the first column and current year's budget and next year's budget. This one, you can see that most of our dollars is going to teaching, central administration is the TAM and green is other. And then same information is broken down by object. So this is where you're like, you'll see your salaries and benefits, your supplies, your purchase service and your capital ally items.
Percentage wise, our staff costs are.
If you want to scroll up a little bit, I want to say it was 62%. And so scroll up. Okay, so right there, total salaries and benefits is 61.4%. That first gray bar, far right for the 24, 25 budget. This statement here is called the MSOX statement. This one's required to be in our budget presentation. So this is saying that the amount of money that we're receiving from OSPI for our, our MSOX, which is supplies, material supplies and operating costs. I will receive $249,976. The amount that we have in our budget that we are going to spend is $727,081. And that difference is $477,105, which is a cost of the district showing that we're not fully funded for our MSOX expenditures.
And that would be consistent with probably.
I state, yeah, every budget I've seen is always has a deficit. And this is a summary of our capital projects fund. So this is also, which is similar to the budget SaaS report you see in your monthly packet, following the same format as the previous general fund slides. And I wasn't sure what kind of projects that we were anticipating for next year. So I put in a capacity of a million dollars there. So that if we were to receive like small desert modernization grant or something that was large, we would have the capacity to receive the revenues and have expenditures for that. And then I put levy committed projects based on what we still have available in our capital projects levy.
And Jeff and I were working with McKinstry on that smaller, excuse me, modernization grant, about six million.
All right.
Yeah. Those, yeah, so if you don't send more than a million next year, otherwise we'll do a budget extension. So then this is our debt service fund. The debt service fund is where we would flow our bond payments through for our bus payment. And then our ASP summary. And then our transportation vehicle fund. And I did budget to spend everything we have in there, which is only $9,392. But it's better to say we have it in there, spend it than have something come up and not be. This is our four-year summary. This is also required for us to project the next four years. So I added a two or three percent increase on revenues and on expenditures. And in the years, I decreased, I, there's one year I. I, there's one year I decreased the FTE by one, so I also reduced the expenditures by that FTE amount.
Way better than they were eight years ago.
Yeah.
On the projections.
Yeah, I did, I did stay with it a little bit, because if you don't really look at some of those things, it, it's all the negative pretty easily, so. Yeah, I mean, it is a rough projection, because you just, things change, so.
Five or six years ago, we were looking at projections that were in bright red negative numbers.
Yeah. So we're going to try really hard to not allow. Yeah. And now we're going into capital projects, so there's a four-year projection for each one. Debt service funds. ASP funds. Transportation vehicle.
That is it?
Any questions?
Lot of red numbers.
Yeah, there is lots of numbers. That put us at twenty-one percent ending fund balance, if we were to spend everything we budgeted to spend. We are under, we're about eighty-three percent of the way and we're not at eighty-three percent expenditures, but when we do my monthly report, I can confirm that for you.
I like to say. I'm okay with that. If the kids need something, we're good.
Three-year.
Okay, so that was the end of our.
Yes.
East School District budget presentation, so now we will go back into our regular board meeting. All right. Six oh two. So. Seven point two.
This is our three-year average graph with the purple dot showing where we, the last purple dot is showing where we were ending as of June. And the yellow line there is where our minimum fund balance policy is. This is our, could it ask county treasurer's statement that I represent out to? This is our budget status report. And this, this is as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, and we're eighty-three percent of the way through the year. And our expenditures are at seventy point one percent, so we are under really budgeted speed. Leaving our end fund balance at seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and fourteen, which is a twenty-two percent ending fund cost. Good job, guys.
Where are we at, this is a great.
I like how you be good.
It's a little bit nicer when we first start coming here.
Yeah. And then our this debt service, we did in June make our, our bus payment through debt service, so you'll see that reflected on our June report there. The, yeah, so we're matured bond expenditures and interest on bonds, those are the two payments we just made in June. ASP. And transportation vehicle.
Looks good. Thank you. Oh, so now we're to eight point one. Not doing the budget in twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five. Make a motion to approve resolution number one dash two thousand, twenty-four slash twenty-five, adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this should be part of your documents, huh?
We can't wait till we approve the design.
Don't.
We didn't open that either yet. So we have a eight, seven, two. Another resolution for a new tractor. Oh, one hundred percent, make a motion to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, state contract, you don't have to get three bits, you, it's already.
Yeah, yeah, you asked for a copy of the contract and I just got that today.
That's the beauty of the state contracts, so what is the turnaround on receiving that? So, ready?
I'm sorry.
What's the turnaround on receiving that?
The tractor. So, once the paperwork's complete and we send the PO to the purchase order and to John Deere, two weeks for the processing, once the processing's complete, they'll bring the tractor out, let the other tractor, and it's done, so.
Nice. So we'll have that support.
Absolutely.
Nice.
Does it have air conditioning? It does.
It's so hot.
It does.
No, we've got our bases covered.
And I guess the hope is for school.
No.
No.
You can leave now.
Right.
Only for ski.
No, not yet, still waiting to check.
Eight point three. Ungoing policy review.
Since it was July, I didn't put a first reading for new bar, board policies, give us a little bit of a chance to have a breather and catch up a little bit. From our last meeting, we tabled those three that you see at the top of the page, and the second reading for the others on the second part of the whole board page.
That's the only thing I really read through it. I'm still a no on thirty-four, twenty-three. Things that have really much reason for that. I'm indifferent on thirty-five, fifteen, and thirty-five, thirty-five, I. I see no mark.
Can I suggest maybe we wait till we have a full board to move ahead on this?
Yeah.
Be okay? Jen, I appreciate that. We'll do those up, I'll just keep this for August.
Okay. Oh, I'll save my answers for the next ones. Because I'll forget. No, side note, do we have any type of session?
We do not.
Okay. Okay, so we will. So I did my homework.
It is ten minutes ago.
So homework, and I turned it in right before class, at least I did mine, just right on the details. Moving on to nine point one. Superintendent birth calendar.
Some of us were in a previous meeting to our board meeting and really stress the importance of transparency with superintendent contracts, so. As I did last year, so this is my draft calendar for this current school, our next school year. And then in June, I'll be sharing new update, as, as you know, things change, so. Yellow is when I'm here, green is when I'm kind of working a half day, usually on the weekends, that's when I do my newsletters, so. If you will recall, that's last week of August, that's when I'm taking my daughter to, to school, so that's why I won't be here in that last week, so. I'll have a plan cover for the staff as we have our staff training days, got some guest speakers coming in, so that'll be taken care of.
Okay. Ten point one. Sharing of any good news. I don't know if it's real good news or bad news, it's not really news, but. Our department had the hundred mile around Cascade Crest this last weekend. So we would like to thank the school for use of ice machine and freezer. We will get down and clean up our mess shortly. We had to all go back for paying jobs and work our free jobs, but.
How many runners?
We started, they had a hundred and ninety on the docket, one did not start, and then I think. There was like sixty-two DMS of heat. So the finishing runner came in in just over nineteen hours.
Nineteen hours and eight minutes.
Around a hundred miles through the mountains.
That's.
Yeah, so, but. I would like to extend a thank you for the use of the freezer and the ice machine and refrigerator.
Yeah.
Somewhere. Yeah, Friday morning.
There's not a chance.
No. And you think they eat really healthy, they don't.
No, they don't.
They just want calories.
As many as they can consume.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, thank you. Thanks for that, Chris. Any other good news?
No news is good news.
Just want to get to the next. Eleven point one. I will make a motion to adjourn meeting. I can do a second, oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That is your computer home alone, I'm curious to see what kind of mess they left. Thank you, everybody.